Good morning, good morning, still morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Senate Standing Committee on Higher Education, the hearing today, and it is, today is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, and the time is 11:15. And I want to welcome and thank my colleagues, Senator Goran and Senator Gennardis for coming, as well as our panels who are going to testify, the students, the faculty, and the administration. This is the third hearing on maintaining quality, equity, and affordability in public higher education throughout the pandemic and beyond the pandemic. This is the, the final hearing will be next Monday, May, November 22nd, 2021, in the Legislative Office Building in Albany, Hearing Room A, and it will focus on SUNY. I would like to thank President Inz, Eric Simons, your college, and their staffs for their hospitality and facilitating the use of the Performing Arts Center for today's hearing. Thank you to the Senate staff that came down from Albany that are helping out today, and to my staff, Nicole Stewart, the counsel to the committee, Beth LaMountain, Marilyn Dyer, Michael Favilla, my chief of staff, and to Tanya, a CUNY intern. And for the record, not only is she a CUNY intern, but she is a USS delegate. With all due respect, they are our clients today. I look forward to hearing the testimony, and I ask that the witnesses adhere to the five-minute time limit so that there is plenty of time for questions. Very briefly, let me say that we want to build on what we did in the budget in April. We had an unprecedented increase in TAP, $500. We are closing the TAP gap finally over the next three years. There are so many improvements. We increased the Opportunity Program allocations by 20%. We have $100 million in capital funding, all sorts of issues that we hope will make the City University of New York even better. So let me ask my colleagues if they have any statements.
Sure.
It's up to you.
Good morning. I just want to thank our chair, Senator Stavisky, for outstanding leadership, not only with these hearings, but in guiding us through a very difficult period for higher education in this state. And we're very grateful to the faculty and the students and everyone at all our colleges and universities around the state who have somehow managed to continue during this very difficult pandemic, and looking forward to hearing everybody's testimony.
Senator Gennardis?
Thank you very much, Senator Stavisky. Good morning, everyone. Very much looking forward to this conversation today. I think building off of what Senator Stavisky said, you know, last year was a, was a good budget year, probably the best year in a decade in terms of funding and support for our City University, but that's just the floor. We still have a very, very high ceiling to hit. And so I think as we explore kind of the next iteration of public higher education post-pandemic, what that looks like, and what the, what types of resources are required to provide that level of education are really going to be at the fore, hopefully of this conversation and of the conversation we'll be having through the budget season. And I hope that we can really do right by the university, by the students, by the faculty, by the administration, and provide them everything they need to be able to deliver the type of experience that we all expect of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. The first person to testify is Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez, who I think has done a remarkable job in leading this institution through some very difficult times. Chancellor Matos.
Thank you. Do I keep the mask or?
The college rules are, I guess, sir.
Okay.
Well, we're six feet away, so it's optional.
I just want to feel that you can hear me okay with a mask. But thank you, Chair Stavinsky, and the members of the Senate Higher Education Committee for inviting me to testify today. I am grateful that we're able to gather together in person after almost 20 months of doing so, doing so much remotely. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the loss of life that we have suffered individually and collectively in New York, in the City University, as a result of the pandemic. CUNY profoundly mourns these losses and honors members of our community on our central in memoriam webpage. And most of our colleges have some means of remembrance, too, in each campus, but our central in memoriam page is the first step in collectively remembering those who have passed on and their life and contributions to CUNY and to New York. So I wanted to begin by acknowledging that. Despite this devastating pandemic, CUNY continues to distinguish itself and to be recognized for our quality, affordability, and effectiveness in propelling students up the socioeconomic ladder. Recent accolades include 10 of CUNY senior colleges being named among the top-performing public schools in the northern United States in 2021 rankings by the U.S. News and World Report, and six community colleges qualifying for the 2023 Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence, considered by many as the highest recognition for community college achievement in the nation. I want to highlight that CUNY's community colleges were the only ones recognized in the entire state of New York for this very distinguished competition. Since the pandemic began, the CUNY has made strong strides to keep affordability a priority. In April of 2020, CUNY established the Chancellor's Emergency Relief Fund to provide aid to students in need amid the COVID-19 crisis. The fund, the fund grew to over $10 million throughout the generosity of foundations, corporations, and many individual donors. This enables to assist about 12,000 students, including undocumented students who were excluded from the, from the Federal CARES Act relief initially. In addition, our colleges raised another $8.6 million to assist an additional 10,000 students. In October of 2020, the university expanded its mental health services to assist the increasing numbers of students at CUNY struggling with the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. The $5 million expansion, supported with funds allocated to the university through the first federal round of funding known as the CARES Act, allowed colleges to reach more students with face-to-face online counseling and other remote wellness services as they continued to pursue their degrees at a distance from their professors, classmates, and campuses. The CARES Act also provided the university with another $180 million for institutional needs, including the purchase of computers, tablets, and internet hotspots for students who needed them to fully participate in remote education and tuition and fee refunds. The average award per student was $736, and the university assisted over 161,000 students. The second round of federal relief funds, known as the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Acts, CRESA as an acronym, provided grants to averaging about $720 to help students meet educational and living expenses during the pandemic. The American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, is the third round of federal stimulus funding and was passed in March of 2021. CUNY colleges receive almost $800 million in ARPA allocations, half of which is committed to additional student emergency grants, and is being disbursed to our students in this semester and in the spring of 2022. The remaining portion of ARPA funding is available for college institutional needs. In working with our campuses, proposals were developed for the, for the use of our remaining stimulus fund, and our collective plan was recently approved by the CUNY Board of Trustees. A major component of our federal stimulus strategy is the CUNY Comeback Program, which we announced this past July. The CUNY Comeback Program is a sweeping plan that has eliminated about $95 million in unpaid debt for at least 52,000 students who attended CUNY and suffered financial hardships during the COVID-19 pandemic. The initiative is one of the nation's largest student debt forgiveness plans of its kind. Additionally, students who did not accrue unpaid tuition and fee balances during the period but experienced financial hardship stemming from the pandemic receive relief in the form of enhanced student emergency grants. At the same time that the university was processing the emergency grants to students, we worked to provide an all-encompassing network of services that made it easier for students to pursue their academic goals. This assistance was critical as more students faced food and housing insecurity and more lost their jobs and lack income. Despite the severe academic and economic challenges students face in completing their degrees amid the COVID-19 pandemic, I am very proud to share with you that the City University of New York conferred a record number of degrees, 59,295 degrees. This is an increase of nearly 5% from the previous year, 2019, 2020, and is the highest in the history of the university. In fact, over the past decade, CUNY has conferred over half a million degrees, 516,217,000 to be exact. In August of 2021, CUNY suspended a long-held policy that banned CUNY schools from releasing the official transcripts of students and graduates who owe the university unpaid tuition and fees. Separately, we directed CUNY colleges to lift financial holds on approximately 74,000 students who were enrolled during the semesters of the COVID pandemic, clearing the way for them to register for the full 2021 semester, even if they owe outstanding tuition and fee balances to CUNY. I am very proud of the efforts that CUNY has made to assist students financially and personally during the pandemic. I received many moving letters of gratitude from all students. Still, consistent with the old university trends, our enrollment numbers have declined, a pattern that is also being shared nationally. Going forward into the next budget season, we are hopeful that the state will continue to support our community colleges by providing flexibility with the state FTE funding formula, and that the city keeps its commitment to restore the budget cuts from the community colleges. The university's budget requests includes initiatives to partner with the city and the state to combat the effects of the pandemic. In order to provide equity and affordability at CUNY, we intend to concentrate on student success, workforce development, advancing social mobility, improving student wellness, and optimizing our campus infrastructure. We will continue to concentrate on student success by requesting funds for full-time faculty, increasing online learning, working with K-12 institutions to improve college readiness, and serving adult learners who might have been displaced during the pandemic. Although I look forward to the formal budget request presentation early next year in Albany, as we normally do when we gather there at the beginning of the year, let me highlight one of our priorities, which is to increase the number of full-time faculty positions, including lecturers, to reduce the reliance on part, on part-time teaching workforce. CUNY will seek $94.1 million for 1,075 new full-time faculty lines, 500 of which will be dedicated for new lecturer lines. If funding is secure for this initiative, it is our expectation that some of these lecture positions will be filled from our existing adjunct faculty. Hiring of full-time faculty is directly tied to student success and retention. Full-time instructors have a particularly high impact in courses that have low passing rates. Having full-time faculty teach more introductory courses will help students identify faculty mentors and faculty advisors who can assist in navigating through the obstacles instead of giving up and dropping out. Additionally, full-time faculty have time to focus on new course development and revision of existing courses. This investment in full-time faculty would allow for greater stability in course offering, student mentoring, and will create a career pathway for our faculty. CUNY's faculty and staff are a key ingredient in our student success strategy and keeping our standard of being a beacon of social mobility and transformation in New York, and we want to acknowledge their contributions here today as I conclude my testimony. Before I thank you, I also want to acknowledge my fellow co-presenters today, President Inz, who are, we are in her school here at York, the provost from Queensborough Community College, Timothy Lynch, who is, will be pinch-hitting for President Mangino, who had a family emergency and couldn't be here with us today, and the one and only, somebody that we're going to be missing dearly in this testimony as we move forward, our Assistant Vice Chancellor Chris Rosa, who is moving to bigger heights, and I want to acknowledge all three of them and thank them for their support. I also want to point out that 66% of the senatorial table in front are CUNY alumni, so I salute you all. And Senator, good luck, you still have time to get a CUNY degree.
I'm SUNY.
You're SUNY, we love you, and there's still, there's still time. You're still young. And with that, I'd like to conclude my testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to be at this hearing, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chancellor, and you've covered many of the areas, full-time faculty, et cetera. Let me mention a couple of others. I know that it's a nationwide phenomenon, not limited to New York State, but as a result of the pandemic, there has been a decline in the number of students. And you and I have spoken on, about that issue on a number of occasions because I have felt that there were many high school students who somehow were never accounted for and would really become future CUNY students if we knew who they were and where they are. You had, you had appointed a commission to study this issue on, on the decline in enrollment. Could you discuss some of their findings and what you're doing to remedy the, the trend?
So, thank, thank you for the question, the opportunity. Welcome, Senator Lou, also, longtime friend.
We've been joined by Senator John Lou.
And so, a number of things. First, to contextualize the enrollment situation, right? If you look at CUNY's enrollment for the eight years prior to the pandemic, our enrollment was fairly flat, and it was, you know, it was moving up and then flat the last couple of years, with an increase in the four-year schools and about a 6% decline in the community college over the four years before the pandemic. The large numbers that we see in the decrease, right, they're pandemic-related. So the question that we have, right, is, and, and as you know, the pandemic has accelerated many trends that people said, you know, maybe this was moving at a slower trend, the pandemic, you know, took it to a different level. So our question is, are we going to be bouncing back, right? If we bounce back, at what rate do we bounce back? And so those are the plans that we're trying to do. So we focus on the community colleges. We did the first-ever CUNY-specific community college marketing campaign. We have never done that exclusively. Two groups within that that were particularly missing were African-American and Latino students, particularly males, so we did a lot of marketing and advertising in media outlets that are frequented by, by those individuals. We increased a couple of our mentoring programs and summer programs with the DOE. I mean, part of the challenge is that the DOE pipeline, because of the pandemic, was also disrupted, right? And we hope that that stabilizes and helps on our enrollment side. And the other part that we're trying to do is also bring back a lot of adults that have some college, right, and would really benefit from being able to come back and complete their degrees and be more marketable in the New York City economy. So we have particularly the community college enrollment in, in our eyes. If you think about it, many of those students there were the ones that were more affected by the pandemic, so it's reasonable to believe why individuals that might be dealing with family situations that had either illness or death in their family, that were seriously disrupted economically, had a challenge to, to, to come back. But we hope that as the economy improves in New York City, that we're going to be able to bring those back. And we're also doing a revision of, particularly in the community college side, our applied associate's degrees, right, to make sure that those applied associate's degrees, which are the degrees that there's no real expectation of transfer, that we can connect them more to the needs of the economy so that the students go there in two years, can get a job immediately. But thank you for your question, and also.
As a follow-up question to that, do you see a correlation between the amount of funding and improving the enrollment numbers? In other words, can, is there a relationship between spending and the opposite, not spending? What would happen to the enrollment numbers in your opinion?
Excellent question, Senator. Thank you for it. People, when they think about enrollment, they often just think about students coming in, right? A key part of enrollment is retention, is keeping those students that come in, right? And we all know that the investments that we're suggesting in additional mental health resources, in additional counselors, in additional faculty that are available more time and can be advisors, that all those things play a role in, in the retention of our students, which is part of the formula for you to keep a robust enrollment. So we believe that the, the investments that we are suggesting here will go a long way into helping the enrollment issue because they will have a huge impact on, particularly on the retention side, which is a key factor in any formula for enrollment success.
On another issue, thank you for your answer. On another issue, what, what are some of the areas you are involved in in terms of workforce development, finding jobs for the students, jobs that have potential?
So, we could dedicate an entire hearing to that, and I'm, you know, always happy to, to engage more there. So there are some things that we're doing that are largely structural. I mean, my reference to rethinking how we do the applied associate's degree in the community colleges is a direct product of our engagement of connecting students to programs for which there's market demand. Some of the work that we have done with the New York City Job CEO Council have been in designing some of those applied associate's degree in consultation with the companies based on where they see demand, right? So we can have programs that have that direct demand coming. When the pandemic hit, we began our upskating campaign that we are, that we've kept, which is providing free courses, mini-courses, credentials to the students so that they could be more competitive when they're out there looking for jobs, and that they can also train in some other areas for which there's demand, right, and maybe pivot in their educational plans. As you know, I want to go down in history as the patron saint of paid internships because we have data that shows that paid internships lead to students graduating faster and also getting a job faster and getting a first-time pay faster. We had about 4,000 students in summer programs with paid internships doing work for city agencies. We are scaling up a program that we began at the Navy Yard, which is for small businesses, another area where we want to be supportive. So we are doing a lot on that front, and it's a, is a very, very important front, and I thank you so much for asking about it because we needed to get the city back on its feet.
Yeah, one last quick question before I ask my colleagues. What would you consider to be the greatest challenge facing City University for the future?
Thank you for that. I, I think that bringing back that population of community college students, right, that's, that it seems that they have halted their advance, either returning to school or beginning school. I mean, that is a huge generation of New Yorkers that are now going to have the advantage of what a higher education brings. So that is one of our main areas of emphasis. How do we, how do we bring back those students?
That goes back to the enrollment issue, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's start at the end. Senator Gennardis, here.
Sure. Thank you very much, Chancellor, and, you know, very exciting to hear a lot of the, the plans in place and the progress we've made. I want to, you know, and I want to commend, you know, your administration and the Board of Trustees for the budget request that you've approved that will come to us next year, and I really hope that us in the legislature, like I said in my opening remarks, can treat that as a floor and not a ceiling in terms of the resources that the university needs. I know Senator Lou has a phenomenal op-ed on that topic in today's Gotham Gazette, which I highly recommend everyone read as well. I want to hone in on a couple of the pieces of that request as it relates to the pandemic. You know, we've gone through this major trauma collectively and individually, and, you know, we see it everywhere, the need for support services, mental health resources, counseling services, advisement services, you know, people who may have lost their way because, you know, life got in the way during the pandemic. Can you first talk about how has the university responded during the pandemic to address that need for students, and where you want to take that conversation, you know, coming out of the pandemic with the resources that you're asking us for?
So, thank you for the question. I mean, that, that is really one of the main areas in which we knew that we had need prior to the pandemic. I think we, many of us have been in hearings talking about additional mental health support before the pandemic, and the pandemic just accelerated that trend. During the pandemic, we were able to use funds from the stimulus package to expand both the number of in-person counselors that we had available, right? Many of them were now doing work remotely, but we had the opportunity, if a student really wanted to meet with, with a person with the safety protocols on the campus, we allowed that to happen. We also learned a lot about the things that we could do online. I mean, there's been one of the, if there's been a, something that we have learned from the pandemic is, 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 you know, things that before we were not quite sure how they were going to play out, we were able to put them into practice, and we were able to put a lot more resources into online counseling and tele, and telecounseling, which we hope to continue to expand. We have put in some of the last, in the ARPA, the last version of the stimulus funding, we have separated some of that funding to keep some of that mental health, but we also added some requests in the, in the budget proposal because we want those things to be, I mean, the stimulus funding goes away, so we need to find ways in which the gains that we made are secure and maintained, and therefore are students.
Great. No, thank you for that. You know, and you're right, this is one that we've identified as a need before the pandemic, the need to improve the ratios of on-campus mental health counselors, incredibly important. You know, this is a place where CUNY can really be a leader, I think, and exceed the national average in terms of providing the type of fostering environment that students need to serve, to thrive in a, in a setting of academic higher education. Can you talk just briefly where, I know we have a very strong and active student body, and I know you meet with them frequently, we have a very robust Senate, you know, we, can you just tell us how, how are the voices of students incorporated, both at large and also day-to-day, in, in how you are interpreting these issues, and how are, how you're translating these issues and these concerns that are coming up, you know, into tangible actions, programs, budget requests? So it's not just... So it's not just, you know, students are always asking for this, but, you know, I want to just get a sense as to how you kind of fold them into the conversation.
I can give you a beautiful, concrete example of something that we did that changed policy that came from Team Hunter, that was the student council leader, president of the Student Faculty Senate and the student trustee when the pandemic began, right? Our whole approach to some of the things in food insecurity, right? We have normally had food pantries in the campuses that were supporting our students and a number of things, and it was the suggestion from team and the student leadership that maybe we would think differently and allow any CUNY student to benefit from any pantry that was close to their house, right? That if you were a York student, but you happened to live near Baruch, right? In some campuses, you could, they would serve anyone, but in some campuses, it was just the students from the campus. We made it a uniform policy, right? That we will serve any student that showed up, you know, with their CUNY ID at any campus to make it easy for them to access the resources. That is a huge policy change, and I am so proud to say that it was not an idea that came from the chancellor, it came from the students who recommended that, and we embraced that recommendation. And I can give you a number of examples of things like that. We are extremely fortunate. I have been so blessed as a chancellor to have incredibly responsible and great student leaders. We listen to the feedback, and that's one concrete example of something that we changed policy based on their direct recommendation.
Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Senator Goran?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your testimony, you talked about requesting more funding in the next budget to increase online learning. And so one of the issues that, you know, we raised at prior hearings and that, you know, want to raise here as well, is to sort of get some input in terms of during the pandemic, including now, the reliance, you know, to a large extent and earlier completely, on online learning and feedback, especially from students. Some folks liked it, some folks didn't, saw opportunities that perhaps they might not have to take a course online. So what do you see as the future, assuming at some point we are beyond this pandemic, in terms of perhaps additional opportunities that may exist to continue online learning in addition to the traditional in-person learning?
Thank you for that excellent question. And, you know, we all do hope, right, that at some point we can leave this behind and go back to the new normal. At the end of the day, right, my aspiration is a City University in which any modality of instruction, in-person, hybrid, face-to-face, is of quality, that the pedagogy, that the teaching is of quality, because that's what matters, right? And I think one of the good things that the pandemic has done, when we pivoted to the online classes, right, and we invested, we trained about 4,500 faculty members in online teaching in a year and a half. I mean, that is two, three times the faculty of many of our single New York City campuses, right? So an incredible investment in faculty being ready to teach in this new modality. What we want is that in whatever modality you as a student decide you want to take your class, because you learn, you feel you learn better face-to-face, you feel you learn better online, or because your life circumstances make it easier for you to be either fully online or to have a mix, that whatever choice you have as a student, that we have, the menu of courses that fit you, right, that fit your modality, and that that faculty member is invested in pedagogy and in teaching. So all that is quality, no matter what. One of the things that I used to, you know, and again, that's an interest of mine since I became chancellor, improved teaching is part of student success, better retention, we all know that, and that's something often not talked about. The pandemic, I think, put teaching, and effective teaching in front, so for me, it's an opportunity. I, over time, what the mix will be, I think, will depend on student demand, right? We need to meet the students where they are. But what we need to guarantee is that whatever that formula is, right, that the instruction provided is instruction of quality. And then the students will make choices as to how they learn better and how their life fits into the offerings that we have. Does that answer your question?
No, it does, very much. Thank you so much, Chancellor.
We've been joined by Senator Lou, member of the committee also. Senator Lou, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great to see you, Chancellor Matos Rodriguez. Just to follow up on Senator Goran's questions, the different modalities of learning, it's great that you've made your statements there about CUNY's commitment to provide different ways of teaching students and providing the classes. Have you spoken with the faculty about that issue and what does the faculty think?
Well, we, the fact that we have 45,000 of them coming to training shows their commitment. They want to teach the students always in the best way that they can. Many of our faculty, and that's myself, right, when you come into teaching in graduate school, you often don't get really any training in pedagogy or in education. It's one of the things that, and we know that the faculty want that, it's not part of their training, right? So we've been investing a lot on that, on that front because it's important, and the feedback from the faculty is that they're interested in those additional tools, particularly to teach the students that we have at the City University of New York.
And we're talking about teaching online courses, that's what?
No, this is teaching, this is pedagogy for online and in other instruction too, right? So we have several grants, we began a teaching academy. We did a number of the online because of the emergency, right? We moved, right? Before the pandemic, CUNY had 90% of its classes in-person, 5% online, 5% hybrid. That's full 2019. We had to pivot to almost exclusively online, right? We have regained a balance of more in-person classes. Over time, the student need, I think, will dictate, right, where that demand is.
My understanding of Senator Goran's question was, what about the future now that we're emerging from the pandemic? Are there, is there an intent to put more classes online or in hybrid format as opposed to the 95-5 mix before?
So I thought that that mix was totally inadequate to meet our students, many of them who are working, many of them who prefer the online format, right? What the final number would be in each campus would depend on the student body, right? For me, it's about meeting that demand of the students. Maybe some campuses would be 70-30, other campuses might be 60-40. I mean, I think that over time is something that each campus will find based on the students who are coming. But for me, the important thing is that, independent of that mix, that we feel that we have, you know, the faculty who are doing, you know, the best job they can in teaching, let it be in-person, let it be online, and let it be hybrid. Because one of the things that people, when the whole online concern about teaching came, I said, well, you know, we have a lot of also, unfortunately, not-so-great teaching in-person, right? That we also need to take, you know, it's not just a panacea of the in-person class. So whatever modality, and, you know, you were a very successful agent at CUNY, always with very high, you know, teaching evaluations from your students because you care about teaching, right? We want that in whatever modality we end up having, but we do feel that that 95-5 was totally inadequate to the students that we serve. What the final number would be, I think, will depend, will vary from campus to campus.
Yeah, and I agree that the students are the most important piece of the equation here, so it's going to be largely up to what students decide, what courses they decide. And when they're choosing their courses, they're going to consider, they're going to look at which courses are online, hybrid versus in-person only. And so those choices are also going to be based on their perception of the quality. And that training, online as well as in-person, is really necessary. And, you know, my strong suggestion would be to work closely with the faculty, not, you know, it's, students are obviously very important, but you need the faculty to want to provide those kinds of courses in different formats and receive the proper training for it.
And I agree, and my sense, and again, we've been in this emergency mode, right? So, but I think that a lot of faculty who have never had any experience with online and mix became exposed to it as a result of the pandemic, and might view that in a different way than they did maybe two, three years ago when they have had more exposure, right? But that's part of an ongoing conversation, so I take your point.
All right. And in order to manage the university as a whole well, in a sustainable way, you know, over the long term, I think there's been questions about, well, what happened? What happened with the enrollment at CUNY? It declined significantly over, during the pandemic. It may have actually been declining a little bit before the pandemic. So there was a suggestion by the state budget director that, well, if enrollments are declining, maybe the, not as much funding is necessary. Does that make sense to you?
So a couple of things. I think that the concern-
Don't hold back, Mr. Chancellor.
No, 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 no. So, I mean, a couple of things. I think first, it's important to sort of bracket the enrollment decline comment because that is mostly a community college phenomenon, right? So to say that CUNY's enrollment has been going down, I mean, that has been the factor, right? The four-year schools have been increasing until the pandemic and then remained sort of flat, right? Graduate programs actually increased during the pandemic. So it is the community college sector, right? And I want to make sure that we, you know, when you do, when you look at all the numbers from the university, community colleges are 40% of our enrollment, so if you have a dip there, it's going to show in the entire moment. But I want to make sure that we circumscribe the issue to where it is, right? In the community college sector, national trend, so we're not here, and New York was hit harder than many other cities. So I think there's reason to believe why you saw that dip, right? The concern from Trusty Mojica is about whether the, this is the bottom out, right? Is this, is this, is it not going to decline anymore? Is this a signal, right, that it will continue to remain soft and decline? And what are we doing about that? I don't think anybody has an answer. We are doing the best we can to go back to the DOE, to get those students back, to work with the brown and Latino students that we know that we missed, to market exclusively on the community college side. But we also believe, right, going back to your question, that some of the additional investments, right, going back to the retention part that I mentioned in answering Santos Tavisi, are an important part of getting the students back, right? That we need those sustained resources to be able to have more full-time faculty in the community colleges, more academic advisors, more mental health advisor, because that improves retention, which is 50% of the enrollment question.
Okay. And then, thank you, Madam Chair. My last question is, I guess you mentioned a couple of times about restoring the pipeline from the DOE. What's that all about? Has the graduation, the number of graduates applying for CUNY from New York City Public Schools been on a serious decline?
So again, this is, is a pandemic glitch. Before the pandemic, we had steady number of students coming from the DOE. Not that there were necessarily graduating more students, but there were graduating more college-ready students, right, that were ready to come to CUNY. Those were the trends up until then. Then the pandemic disrupted, you know, students that were for two years, taking online classes for the last two years, right? Maybe they didn't want to go to another online space, you know, the year immediately, and they wanted to take a break. And maybe there were things in their family that affected them. So when I talk about the disruption there, is that the DOE was disrupted, as we are all of us, right? We're trying to, as we go back to normal, sort of retake some of those patterns back. We need to be mindful, and your question is a great lead to be mindful of maybe the additional support some of those students might need, right? Because they might have had a couple of years in which the instruction was not as robust as it could have been, right? And we need to factor that in when we accept them into CUNY to help them succeed. But I am, one of the, my main hopes as the city transitions to, you know, Mayor-elect Adams, right, is to, from the get-go, have a really, really tight partnership with the K-12 commissioner and sort of a Batman and Robin team, because if we do those things, that pipeline becomes far more formidable.
Right. Mr. Chancellor, I'm hearing two things from you, which is, number one, maybe the number of applications from graduates of New York City Public High Schools is down, right? I think that's what you're saying, and it's pandemic-driven?
Yep.
That maybe they're deciding not to apply to CUNY or to colleges in general right away? Maybe they're deciding to, for whatever reasons, they decided to wait.
Take a gap year, do different kinds of things, yes.
Okay. Or the second point, which you mentioned, you're concerned about maybe some of the quality of the online learning was not quite up to snuff? And maybe that's why the pipeline from the DOE is diminished? Because that is obviously not something we've ever heard from the New York City Department of Education.
Well, I mean, the, I wouldn't say that it's just the quality, it's just the experience, right? If you were a student, I'll give you, my own son, who's a freshman in college now, right? He, good student, right, in the sciences, he absolutely hated it, the experience. He didn't like it, right? So there's a preference there that I think many students might have said, listen, I want to wait until we go back to a more normal set of offerings to go back, right? And time will tell about that.
By the way, my son also, he had to, like, three semesters of online learning. Thankfully, he's graduating this year, in May. So, but still, I'm concerned to hear about, hear this comment. Do you, and, you know, obviously, the liability's not with you, the responsibility's not with you, but is there a concern that the online learning within New York City Public Schools did not fully prepare some of those students for college, specifically to even apply to CUNY?
I mean, again, I don't know, I mean, I think we're concerned, we were in an emergency mode, right? So it's not just the online instruction, it's what was happening in their lives with their family and all these things, right? That we went through trauma, right? So I don't know that I would just signal the online experience, right? It remains to be seen. We don't know that, right? We'll get to see that as the students move on, right? That also applies to our own online teaching at CUNY, right? I don't want to also just sort of, you know, single out here. Everybody needs to take a look about how we were all doing the best we could in an emergency scenario.
Okay.
Right? We need to remain vigilant to see whether those things do come up, and then how can we be supportive? Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you, fellow.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Same here, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that question of enrollment, at the community college level where it is most severely seen, there's been an impact. How is the 21-22 budget provision for the community colleges with the 98% floor going to work? It's sort of like a save harmless concept.
Well, so I-
I assume it's going to be helpful, that's really-
Well, I mean, and I mentioned that in my testimony, that is our assumption too, and that's what we thought that it should be kept in mind. The other part of the equation too is that, you know, the budget in the community colleges took a $65 million cut, right, which is supposed to be restored back- took a $65 million cut, right, which is supposed to be restored back in next year's budget. So, we want to make sure that that promise is kept, right? Because, I mean, that's a significant hit on a sector that is suffering from the enrollment decline.
Let me bring up one issue I forgot to mention, and that is the idea that when a contract is negotiated, there are certain items that are not covered in that contract, such as the pensions, such as the fringe benefits. I shouldn't say the pensions, but I know the fringe benefits in particular. And with the State University of New York, they negotiate an MOU through legislative action. How do you propose to do that with CUNY?
So, let me make sure that I understand your question. You're talking about the fringe benefit-
The fringe benefits for the faculty.
So, those are part of our budget request, because those are-
That's part of your budget request.
Yes, because those are things that, contrary to, and again, you might have a better sense of this from your experience as chair, my understanding is that, in the case of SUNY, those already rolled out, and they don't have to request it, right?
That's why I'm asking.
In our case, every year, we have to come up to you to make sure that is included in the budget request, because it is not automatically done, and it is a significant amount of money, as you know.
And that can be used for other things.
Yep, and it's part of our budget requests that you will see in more detail when we reconvene again in Albany in the lovely winter.
I've always felt that there should be parity between CUNY and SUNY, and what we do for one, we should be doing for the other. And we do it for SUNY, and it seems to me it ought to be automatically done for CUNY. Are there any other questions? We thank you. Oh, Chair?
I just want to note, Madam Chair, that it sounded like before the chancellor was requesting that you hold another hearing on workforce development. Am I right?
Always, always delighted to talk about workforce. It's an important thing for New York City, and, you know, this is CUNY moment to be helpful to the city getting back. So, delighted to get additional support, homework ideas, and what we can do in this front. Very, very important.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you, Chancellor, for coming, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Now, you get upgrades with President Ince and Lynch and Chris Rosa, so the worst part is over for you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Ince, President Ince, we thank you for your hospitality again here, for making this- what? Okay. And Mr. Simons, we thank you.
Chairperson Savinsky, members of the Senate Higher Education Committee. I am Dr. Berenice Johnson Ince, President of York College here in the heart of Jamaica, Queens. Thank you for inviting me to speak to the committee. We are so pleased to be hosting this important discussion on maintaining quality, equity, and affordability in public higher education throughout the pandemic and beyond. I want to thank the supporters of CUNY and York present today to discuss this topic, as it is of tremendous importance to me. These values, quality, equity, and affordability, are central to the mission of York College and our work during my time as president, has reflected those priorities, notwithstanding the significant challenges imposed by COVID-19 pandemic. Here at York College, we are helping students actualize their dreams and visions in a way that is transformative for their families and their communities. We ranked number 11 in social mobility and tied for number 19 top public schools in U.S. News and World Report 2022. Located in the most ethnically diverse borough in the city of New York, our students reflect that diversity, with 36.3% identifying as Black and African-American, 26.3% Hispanic, Latino, 23.3% Asian, 45% are born outside the mainland of U.S., and 61% are first-generation to graduate college. Looking forward, I am launching a presidential commission on diversity, equity, and inclusion to elevate and celebrate and grow the amazing diverse community found here at York. We remain steadfast in our commitment to foster a culture of student success with support of talented faculty, staff, who represent the best of CUNY. York College cannot do this without the deeply rooted partnership with our local community that defines our humble beginnings, informs our history, and continues today to be just as strong, if not stronger. During the COVID-19 pandemic, York initially served as a COVID testing site for thousands of the borough residents, and then a federal-state mass vaccination site administering over 250,000 vaccines. What a tremendous privilege to play a small role in the VACs at CUNY and the New York State efforts to test and vaccinate residents. We are also proud to serve as one of the first early voting sites in Queens for approximately 60,000 to 100,000 residents during local, state, and national elections. We are deeply committed to improving the graduation and retention rates of our students, but know we have work to do as we emerge from the pandemic and beyond. This requires a college-wide effort. We do see areas of promise. The four-year graduation rate has been inching higher over the past three years. There has been a slight increase in the proportion of first-time students who earn 30 credits or more during their first year at York. We have cast a wide net of resources and efforts to begin to shift in these areas. Our Child and Family Care Center received $183,000 of C-Campus grant for school-age children who are children of students here. We also received other grant funds to support all of the work that we're doing with the student parents in our community. We launched York One Stop Welcome Center, which serves students both virtually and in person in the areas of admissions, registrar, bursar, financial aid, advising, student health services, and information technology. We supported the mental health of our students with an increase in programming and outreach with $260,000 from the, $174 from the CARES Act. Our hunger-for-knowledge food pantry supported over 400 households this year with a team of professional staff, health educators, and academic departments. Advancement had a banner year raising $600,000, highest since the 2017 50th anniversary year, and over $150,000 was awarded to students in the form of scholarships, grants, and stipends. We also want our students to see themselves reflected in the faculty and staff on campus. When hiring 70 full-time new faculty members between 2016 and 2020 in either new positions or replacements, 60% were women, and three of the five represent a racial or ethnic minority group. Fiscal year 2021 was challenging budget year for CUNY overall and York College, primarily due to the pandemic. Some factors include decreased enrollment and decreased collections. These shortfalls were largely offset by Federal CARES Act and CHRISA funds, which enabled the college to end fiscal year '21 in a slightly positive position. Our faculty also secured 12 grants in 2020 totaling $1 million. I am excited that CUNY has included the Academic Village and Conference Center at York College as one of the top priorities in capital budget requests. If funded, this $165,000 square foot facility would provide modern classrooms, computer labs, and conference rooms available for use by the community. It also would serve as a student center. Moving from the possibility of a new building to what has already come to fruition, I am elated to announce that we have reached a long-awaited completion of three major facilities projects on the campus. The HVAC upgrade, elevator and escalator replacement upgrade, and the emergency repairs to the HPAC hot water loop. Several upgrades are very near completion: building management system, automated temperature control, renovations and technology upgrades to faculty dining room, lecture halls, biology lab, chemistry lab, and greenhouse, and the waterproofing of the roof replacement of our very own Performing Arts Center where we are today. We will be celebrating the supporters and partners who helped secure funding and made this work possible very soon. I invite the members of the committee to join us for a ribbon-cutting celebration on December 3rd. I thank the committee for your time and for your support of CUNY, and on behalf of our amazing students, faculty, and staff, once again, welcome to York College.
Thank you, Madam President, and we have been joined by our hometown hero, Senator Leroy Comrie.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. I want to thank our Chair, Senator Savinsky, for having this hearing here at York College today. As Chair of the Corporations Committee, I was celebrating the opening of the Belmont Railroad, and unfortunately, it was happening at the same time that the first Long Island Railroad new construction project in 50 years is happening in conjunction with the opening of the UBS arenas. I needed to be there so I could be able to commemorate the fact that we fought hard to make that project happen. But we're here at York College today, and I want to thank you for hosting this hearing here. It's important, and I'm very excited that our Chair, who has been hearing, holding hearings all over the state regarding education, wanted to make sure we had one in Queens at York College. As President Ince has said, York College is doing a lot of great things and working with a lot of new programming and has some very large capital needs. I'm sorry I walked in during your speech, but I hope you mentioned the fact that we need a new facility, a new major facility for the campus as well, that you've been working on for the last 10, or that the campus is working on for the last 10 years. And at one point, it was at the top of the CUNY's capital list, and I hope that we can make sure that that still happens, because we need a new student center here at York College. So, with that, thank you all. I look forward to hearing the rest of the testimonies this morning. Want to apologize to Chancellor Rodriguez for missing his testimony, but I will be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Comrie. Let me just add, you've covered most of what I was going to ask you, and Senator Comrie mentioned the need for a student union building. Following up on Senator Comrie's point, what are your top needs that the legislature can help address, both on the operating side and on the capital side?
So, as I mentioned, the Academic Village and Conference Center is the terminology we're using for that space. Along with that, we know that particularly post-pandemic, it's very expensive for us to make sure that we're supporting all of the students in the way that we can when we're going into this new reality we're going to be going into. I don't want to say "post," I want to say "after," and what our new beginning. I'd like to hear something exciting at this point. But also, student support services particularly are very important to us in our community, where we have so many students who are first generation, and we find that they respond quite positively to the idea of us having paid internships, also workforce development, increasing the work that we're doing in that area, and also never forgetting that we are and always have wanted to be sure that we have the emergency services that we need for the students.
Last question. The students in the last, really, 2019, sort of, 2020 was sort of a lost year, but in 2019 and this year, the students have spoken very poignantly about the need for food services, but also for mental health services. And we did put money in the budget this year for, it was not nearly enough, obviously, a million for CUNY and a million for SUNY, for mental health. How have you been dealing with those, with the mental health crisis on your campus?
So, initially, we did, we were able to use our stimulus funds for mental health programs being provided directly to the students on campus. We made sure that the ongoing, we developed a task force that was made up to make sure that the virtual services were in place, that the food pantry, we had to pivot pretty fast with that food pantry, and have it outside of the campus to be safe, but to keep it consistent. So, there was no stop in the ability for us to help the students. So, I think that the mental health services and how we changed them into the virtual services, right, and a variety of groups and that kind of thing for the students was a really big deal, and we appreciate all the support. We did use some of our federal stimulus funds for those things.
Thank you. Senator Comrie, do you have any questions? We started at the other end before, that's why I don't make to put you on the spot.
Okay. Now, I just want to thank again President Ince and her staff for everything that they're doing. Just want to ask a question. How's the issue with the water table and the pumping?
So, you know, the water table is a conversation, I believe, actually, you and a lot of my team and people working with the community, that's been ongoing. I believe that it is an active conversation that predates my arrival, but also continues to try to find a resolution that's best for everyone involved, right? And you and I have talked about this before, that we know that in this area of Queens, it is an issue, the flooding. We have been able to mitigate most of it whenever we did have some kind of emergency, but I know that our teams are working together with your office and others to talk about larger-scale work. And I know our CUNY partners are definitely involved in making sure that we keep that conversation very active until we find some resolution.
Well, just to reinform my colleagues and the general public, unfortunately, because of the high water table in this part of Jamaica because of the aquifer, York College has to pump water 24 hours a day to keep their sub-basement dry, or it would be totally flooded. And just also, the Parsons-Arches subway station has to pump 24 hours a day. But York College has been put in a situation where they've been asked to recirculate the water as opposed to having the water leave the area. So, they have to constantly pump, and if there's an extra-heavy rainfall, the pumps have to work even harder. So, that's a lot of maintenance required on their part that's coming out of their budget as well, and we hopefully need to find a permanent solution. I did talk to the new administration about sitting down, because there's been a problem on trying to get that resolved between three levels of government. But it unfortunately leads it to the college to continue to try to pump 24/7 to keep their mechanicals, because as you know, all the mechanicals are in the sub-basement. So, it's a real problem to maintain that and keep that area dry. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you ever think being a college president would involve? I think, seriously, this demonstrates the changing purviews of a college president, where at one time, you were concerned with courses and faculty and so forth, and an occasional student protest, and now you become a water engineer. Senator Lou, do you have any questions?
I also, I too appreciate the myriad of issues that President Ince has to deal with here at York College. I have a question about how you derive your budget annually. Is the budget primarily coming directly from CUNY itself? Or does York College have to concern itself with how much is being paid in tuition by York students?
Well, I think the answer to that question is yes and yes, quite honestly. We do definitely get our budget allocation from CUNY Central with a connection to our enrollment, obviously. But one of the things I've been trying to work on here is to remind people that we definitely are city and state located, but not totally city and state-funded all the time, and that's why we've been trying to shore up some of our advancement work also for other things for the students.
So, York College students who pay tuition, they basically pay tuition to CUNY as a whole, as opposed to York College?
Yes, but we get an allocation for our students from their enrollment.
But presumably, you get your allocation regardless of what proportion of your college students are actually paying tuition?
I guess my answer is yes and yes. Yes.
Okay. So, when enrollment goes down at York College, I mean, we have explored how that-
Your allocation is directly connected to your enrollment.
Okay. So, there's that level of financial impact due to enrollment as well? Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
Senator Gore?
I guess I just have a curiosity, this is my first visit to this campus, and this center here, this Performing Arts Center, which I see you're, has had to deal with some water-related issues, as my colleague discussed. Tell me a little bit about the center and the overall arts programs that it supports here, particularly since you have such a high percentage- arts programs that it supports here, particularly since you have such a high percentage of first-time college students in the family.
So I want to tell you two things that stand out in particular. First, we have fantastic Performing Arts curricular program, right, where students are studying the theater and the arts here at York College. This particular facility you are sitting in had some additional water challenges on the roof that I am happy to report are no longer there. We are airtight here, so the renovation of this space will begin later on in the spring. Having said that, over the years, it has been a host to many, many local community events, shows, and also the shows of our students themselves, right? So in an ideal world, when we're not dealing with the capital projects and the maintenance things that we are trying to take care of now, this center would be moving at all times, right? The typical seasonal shows from our students, but also lots of the shows that had been happening here in Jamaica over the years. But the facility itself was in, is in deep need of renovation on the internal side of the theater itself, and of course, the roof problem had to be addressed, or we would never stop having more damage. So we're on our way.
You expect to be back to full operation, I guess?
Very much hoping.
In April, I see a sign back there.
We're hopeful, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Very hopeful.
Thank you. And you're always available for installations for elected officials.
I'm always available. We are.
I know.
We keep it busy. We try to.
I've been here for many of them. Are there any other questions for the President?
Thank you so much.
Well, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and...
You got a fan call?
Yeah. Next, we have Dr. Timothy Lynch, Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Queensborough Community College, and former interim acting president of Queensborough Community College, which is in my Senate district, and I know it well. And at one time, my husband was assistant to the President and a dean of, I think, administration.
Excellent. Well, it's good to see you again. Good afternoon, Chair Stavisky, and members of the Senate Committee on Higher Education. I'm Dr. Timothy Lynch, the Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Queensborough Community College. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to sit in for President Christine Mangino, who is dealing with a family emergency, and sends her sincere apologies for not being able to attend this afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on her behalf and to share the good work that we do to ensure that our students have equal access to the resources, tools, and support that enable their success. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge your tireless and time-honored advocacy. Your investments in students transforms their lives and strengthens our state. I thank you. Queensborough serves one of the most diverse college communities in the nation. 29% of our nearly 11,000 students identify as Asian, 28% as Black, 28% as Latin. Our students come from over 117 countries and speak more than 60 languages. More than half report a household income of less than $30,000 a year. Nearly half are first in their families to attend college, and 55% of our students are women. Thanks to your help, nine out of 10 Queensborough students graduate debt-free. They work, they care for family, yet nearly a third say they're worried about having enough food to eat. More than 40% reported loss of income due to COVID. We empathize with their struggles, their strengths, and their successes. I'd like to share a few personal stories from our students. Y lost his job during the pandemic at the same time that his father was diagnosed with cancer. Because of his cultural norms, he was hesitant to ask for help, but our faculty and staff saw his need, and we were able to connect him with mental health support via Queensborough's High Flex Counseling Center. Last week, Y was accepted at Columbia University to pursue his dream of becoming a doctor. Nicole lived out of a suitcase because COVID devastated her family's finances. She told us, "I didn't calculate how difficult it would be to concentrate while hungry." We interceded with emergency funds and support via our campus food pantry. Nicole graduated in May, and today she's enrolled at an Ivy League school. Andre, a student in CUNY's Black Male Initiative program, is unemployed and homeless. He receives extensive support at Queensborough. To quote him, "The idea of supporting young Black scholars to believe in themselves and help them learn, grow, and mature is a beautiful thing." And it is indeed beautiful when you're able to provide a community with the tools and resources they need to succeed. Over the course of the pandemic, we've extended the reach of our food pantry and fed more than 800 students and their families. We've provided students with more than 1,000 laptops and related technical support. We've engaged psychologists to connect students with the right supports for their circumstance at the right time in their academic journey. And we've increased opportunities for continuing education and workforce development to provide individuals with the specialized skills and training required to enter the workforce or in advance of their chosen careers. As a result, our college community and our city and the state are stronger, because when our students succeed, we all succeed. Despite this success, we, like virtually all community colleges across the country, are seeing challenges, most notably declines in enrollment. Now, more than ever, we must reinvest and reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that community colleges continue to work for the communities they serve. We are essential to the state's prosperity. We are key to economic growth and stability. Queensborough, in fact, has been hailed by both The New York Times and The Chronicle of Higher Education for its success at propelling low-income individuals into the middle class. Though the pandemic took much, it galvanized our community to think more deeply, become more equitable, and converse honestly about issues such as access, equity, and affordability. In the summer of COVID, against the backdrop of longstanding systemic and institutionalized racism, Queensborough reexamined its place and purpose. We recommitted to our mission by deepening our understanding of our students, their experiences, and their identities. We moved equity to the forefront of our planning to increase opportunities for Black, Latinx, and low-income students, and we recently became one of only 49 truth, racial healing, and transformation campus centers in the country, the first and only in New York City to be designated as such by the Association of American Colleges and Universities. Two weeks ago, we were notified of our eligibility for the highly coveted 2023 Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence because of our achievements in areas such as equity, degree completion, transfers, and workforce success. At Queensborough, we focus on our success and learn from each other, and like our students, we defy expectations. And like Andre said, that is a beautiful thing. I thank you, Chair Stavisky, and members of the committee, and welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Provost Lynch. One of my questions normally addressed to the Chancellors, both SUNY and CUNY, at budget hearings, is what are we spending in terms of remediation that's required? Have you noticed any change, for the better or for the worse, in the preparedness of the students for Queensborough?
Yes, indeed. Queensborough is proud that we have led the way with higher education in phasing out traditional remedial coursework. And students who are in need of additional support, academic or otherwise, are routed in the appropriate direction. At Queensborough, we have what's called an ALP program, which is a corequisite approach to remedial and developmental education. It's been very successful. The students are progressing through the curriculum at a much more rapid pace than previous. This is something that's covered by financial aid as well, so you're not delaying your progress towards your degree, nor are you wasting financial aid or other resources on empty credits. So it's been a very successful program. It is a costly program, because the additional instructional hours, of course, but the proof is in the pudding, and our students are doing well because of this approach.
Thank you. Because I've always, at one time, it was, I believe, 60% of the student body that needed remediation, and that really was not the fault of the college. It was, to me, the fault of the preparation in K through 12. This year, we increased the opportunity programs by 20%. What kind of impact has that had on the Queensborough students, whether it be particularly, well, any of those programs? And secondly, the second part of the question, and my last question, how has the funding from the city affected you? Because I think there's been a decline, and the state has been asked to pick up the slack.
Yes, I'll answer that second question first. As President Eames had alluded, our funding sources are diverse, but they're also dwindling. So when enrollment declines, we lose tuition revenue. Our allocation from the university is based on our FTE. This year, we're down about 15% in FTE from last fall, so we've seen a significant decline in revenue. And what we've noticed is that the students who are most in need of our aid are those who are being disproportionately affected. So the opportunity programs that are geared towards underrepresented communities are vital, and they're needed more than ever, and the support they provide is appreciated more than ever. So your advocacy for increased allocations to the opportunity programs is very much appreciated, and your continued support there would be pivotal and critical for our students as they struggle to readjust, I think, as we're pivoting back towards, you know, a return towards normalcy in our institutions.
Yeah, last year, the executive eliminated the ASAP program, if my memory is correct. That was the only one in the, he eliminated. Obviously, it applies only to the community colleges, and we restored that money, because I think ASAP should be for all of the students who are eligible, not just the community colleges.
No, ASAP is a wonderful program.
Yep.
It's tried and true, and as I'm sure you're well aware, it's been replicated in many other university systems across the nation, and it's kind of the secret sauce, right? As to what makes CUNY so special is these programs that we provide to our students who benefit from them.
It was described in the, New York Times had a feature on it quite a number of years ago, and it's been replicated throughout the country, and I think it's a great program. I thank you. Now, let's see, we start this side here. Senator Gordon?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for the testimony. I raised this topic before with the Chancellor. What do you see as the future of online learning, Queensborough, once we hopefully get past this pandemic?
Well, I think there's definitely a place for online education in CUNY and at Queensborough. When the pandemic hit, Queensborough had fewer than two dozen sections that were fully online, and we had to pivot an additional 2,000 in a very short period of time. We've provided some significant training and additional resources for our faculty so that they can interact and engage with their students in a meaningful way. There have been challenges, certainly. We've learned that certain disciplines don't translate as well to the online environment. And when we made the decision to bring some activities back to campus, we foregrounded those that required in-person activities because of certifications or licensure or accreditation. And then we moved to some others that were suboptimal in an online environment. A lot of the lab sciences, for example, music production, acting, and theater, these needed to be kind of fast-tracked back to campus. But we've also realized that there is a place for online education in higher ed, and we want to make sure that we do this strategically, we do it intentionally, and that we provide the support that's needed for both the faculty members and the students. You know, I think a good mix would be 75% in person, 25% online. That provides some flexibility for our students, many of whom are working, or our parents, who have, you know, a lot of challenges to become successful or to be successful in their academics.
Do you envision that you might see in the future some unique opportunity to perhaps bring in a professor that you might not be able to have on campus, or maybe even a course or a new program because of this new capability?
Indeed. If there's a silver lining to the clouds of the pandemic, it is this opportunity to attract new students, to perhaps attract new faculty and staff, and we've done this already. We've seen, we have a fully online business administration program now, and we're marketing it through social media, and we're hoping to attract students from, you know, far beyond the immediate tri-state area. And I think we have some opportunities here to really differentiate ourselves from some of the other online providers of education because of the great reputation that CUNY has for providing access and serving as an engine of upward social mobility.
Thank you very much.
Senator Lou, do you have a question? Senator Comrie?
I'll ask you, you have, your Performing Arts Center, is the construction completed there?
Not yet. We're closing in. We hope to have it available by the start of the next academic year.
Do you have all of the money that you need to complete it?
That's a good question. There's a lot of deferred maintenance on our campus that would benefit from an infusion of capital. The theater is one, I think, that has gotten to where it needs to be, thanks to the support of yourself and others. But there are some challenges with infrastructure on the campus, certainly.
And but as you said, you have a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of buildings that need to be renovated and upgraded on campus, and I know you don't have that with you. You just called into this this morning, so, but I would appreciate it if you could give the committee an update on what those costs are.
Certainly. The deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed would be roofs on some of our buildings, which have shown signs of aging and water damage. There's a request, I know, for some upgrades in our lab facilities, a chemistry lab in particular. We have ongoing issues with elevator maintenance. It seems to be a different elevator every week is taken out of circulation, and I believe that the President, as part of her strategic plan, is going to identify some other programs or projects, including the Student Union and the Library, which are both centrally located in our campus and real hubs for student activity. And because of the amount of traffic that they get, there's a need for a refresh, at least.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr....
Follow up on that Performing Arts Center. When did the request go? How long has this been in limbo? I know the answer, that's why I'm asking the question.
For too long. I've been with the college since 2017, and I know at that time that there was...
Because many years ago, I provided some funding, and that goes back close to 10 years, probably, because you have a wonderful Performing Arts Center here as well.
We do. We do. It's a real beacon for the community.
If you could let me, what you sent to Senator Comrie?
Yes.
We did put quite a bit of critical maintenance in the budget, plus a million dollars for CUNY for capital, and I've been following some of these projects. I'm a new trustee of the CUNY Construction Fund, and I'm very troubled by the length of time it's taken for many of these projects to get started, and how much, how many cost overruns we've been asked to approve. Okay?
Okay.
We're good? Thank you.
I thank you all.
Doctor Lynch? Next, we have Dr. Christopher Rosa from CUNY Leeds, and Carrie Shockley. And before you begin your testimony, let me thank... And before you begin your testimony, let me thank Dr. Rosa for his service to CUNY. It's been a remarkable career here. I know you're going on to bigger and better things at the Viscardi Institute, at the school, rather, but we are so grateful for your leadership and your advocacy role at CUNY. Many, many times have I seen you in the halls of Albany, and for the record, Dr. Rosa lives in my district and went to Queens College with my son. So we've known each other for a long time, and we are very grateful, everybody, the entire higher ed community, so we thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Thank you. I'm certainly transitioning, but I, and I'm excited about the opportunity, but I respectfully love and disagree. I don't know if it's, it's definitely not bigger than CUNY, and, and it's qualitatively different, but certainly not better. But thank you for that, and for all your, you and, and the distinguished members of the Senate for your undying support of access and opportunity for the students we represent, particularly students with disabilities. And good afternoon to all of you. Thank you so much for inviting to testify at this afternoon's hearing, along with CUNY's remarkable Director of Disability Programs, my colleague, Dr. Carrie Shockley. I'm Chris Rosa, CUNY's Assistant Vice Chancellor for Student Inclusion Initiatives. Carrie and I deeply appreciate the opportunity to discuss the needs of CUNY students with disabilities in general, and the opportunity to discuss the needs of students with intellectual disabilities presented by our CUNY Unlimited Program in particular. As all of you know, the pandemic was a disruptive force in higher education and posed many challenges for CUNY and for colleges and universities across our state and nation. These challenges have been felt acutely by our students with disabilities and the campus administrative offices charged with providing our students with critical reasonable accommodations and support services. On most CUNY campuses, requests by students with disabilities for accommodations and support services more than doubled in the remote learning environment. In determining how to most meaningfully address students' accommodation needs, we all certainly found ourselves in unfamiliar territory. Students and disability services professionals alike had to figure out what worked best in a virtual environment. For some students with disabilities, learning from the safety and natural supports of their homes positioned them to thrive, while for others, the heroic efforts of our disability services professionals to support them notwithstanding. Pandemic-related stressors, public health challenges, social isolation, and struggles with remote learning modalities caused them to stop out. Our campus disability services professionals are actively working to reengage these students in the hope that they'll be able to resume their studies at CUNY in spring 2022. As we transition back to traditional classroom learning environments, the need to provide more supports and services to our students with disabilities will be critical to their persistence and success, and that's why we were so appreciative of the state's efforts to provide $2 million in supplemental state support for enhancing services for students with disabilities at colleges and universities throughout New York State. CUNY's share of these funds, $300,000, will arrive at our campuses in the spring 2022, just when our students need it most. The pandemic also precipitated a paradigm shift in CUNY's delivery of its signature disability programs. This past year, we transitioned our CUNY Leeds programming from in-person employer meet-and-greets to the Leeds Online Learning Platform. Most of these career readiness programs, moving them to an online format, allowed for greater participation across campuses, with student travel no longer being a barrier to participation. Leeds Online is a student-facing, monthly seminar series that supports work readiness skill development. As students make their transition to summer internships and graduates pursue employment, our spring series entitled Creating a Roadmap to Success focuses on career mapping and exploring alternative routes to employment success. Participants from across our signature disability programs, including students on the autism spectrum served by CUNY's Project Reach, actively participated. Because of its scalability and ability to meet students where they are, quite literally and figuratively, our CUNY Leeds team plans to continue Leeds Online programming in the coming year. Our ability to sustain the transformative impact of CUNY Leeds on the employment chances of students with disabilities will be critical to their ability to benefit equitably from the state economy's post-pandemic recovery. New Yorkers with disabilities still face a staggering employment gap as compared to New Yorkers without disabilities, and any gains we achieved on this front were largely washed away by the economic disruption of the pandemic, as New Yorkers with disabilities experienced job loss at twice the rate of New Yorkers without disabilities. As our state economy comes back online, we're anticipating that 70% of jobs produced in our state's post-pandemic economy will require some level of higher education. At this moment in our state's history, meaningful access to higher education to New Yorkers with disabilities has never been more critical to accessing jobs and pathways to equal employment opportunity, social mobility, and full and equal participation in the American dream. The state's modest but important increase of $164,000 in CUNY Leeds funding allowed CUNY to incrementally increase its capacity to support career readiness for the very students whose employment opportunities are most likely to be compromised by pandemic-induced economic dislocation. And now I yield to my colleague, Dr. Shockley.
Good day. It's a pleasure to be here with you all, and thank you for the opportunity. While the pandemic has challenged employment opportunities for all students with disabilities, some group, some groups of disabled students' career chances have been more profoundly affected than others. Of all New Yorkers with disabilities, job opportunities for people with intellectual disabilities has been impacted most, largely because employment opportunities for people with ID have historically been limited to food service and retail sectors of our economy, the segments of the state's economy that have been most impacted by pandemic-related economic disruption. In light of these developments, our CUNY Unlimited Program has never been more important to the life chances and independent living of New Yorkers with intellectual disabilities. In partnership with the nonprofit AHRC NYC and our colleagues at the New York City Department of Education District 75, CUNY has developed an Inclusive Higher Education Program that allows students with intellectual disabilities to benefit equitably from our university's historic role as an engine of social mobility and independence for New York families. CUNY Unlimited will offer students with intellectual disabilities the opportunity to earn a U.S. DOE-certified meaningful credential, which verifies to employers that these students have achieved core competencies and basic literacy, civic engagement, independent living, and career readiness through their experiences at CUNY. The data indicate that CUNY Unlimited participants are employed at a rate 20% higher within three years of graduation than similarly situated individuals with intellectual disabilities who do not participate in inclusive higher ed. Our recommendation is for the New York State Governor and the legislature to continue its leadership in providing additional state support for CUNY students with disabilities. We would be remiss if we didn't recognize the critical work of Senator Stefiski and the members of the Senate Higher Education Committee for their steadfast and strong support in this effort with new funding made available in last year's final budget. Our students were delighted by this important recognition of the students, of students with disabilities. The CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities urges building on this progress. Finally, we realize that we cannot turn solely to our state leaders in our efforts to secure additional support for students with disabilities, and that is why CCSD is requesting that Mayor-elect Adams and the members of City Council support a CUNY and NYC DOE budget request to expand CUNY Unlimited programs for our students with intellectual, with intellectual disabilities in all five boroughs. The cost of the CUNY DOE initiative would be less than $1 million annually. Any assistance that you could provide in encouraging your colleagues in New York City government to support this effort would also be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your abiding commitment to access and opportunity for CUNY students with disabilities.
Thank you. I know we put additional funding in, and I certainly hope we continue the Summer Committee for the Disabled Students. I know it's a CUNY-wide effort, but every summer, we know it's summer when they come to Queens College, and I hope you will come back, Vice Chancellor Rosa. Have you spoken to the city? I know you testified that you're hoping. I have always felt that the city is not really putting in the amount of money, not just for the disabled, but for the entire, particularly the community college campuses. Do you, how have you been dealing with this, what I think is a lack of funding by the city?
We've, we've had some very productive discussions, particularly with members of the City Council. The program that Carrie described, our CUNY Unlimited Program, in partnership with New York City District 75, is a dual enrollment program, which is sort of comparable in concept to CUNY's path-breaking program, College Now. And we see this as sort of like an inclusive college now for students with intellectual disabilities, and we feel like we've gotten a lot of keen interest by advocates within the City Council, and we're hoping the time is right to build on some of that momentum and the strong partnership with New York City DOE.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Comer, do you have a question?
No, no question.
No question, sir?
I just want to thank Chris for his years of advocacy and service. Always good to see you, Chris.
You too, Senator. Thank you all. Thank you in particular.
And thanks to Carrie as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I know we have to do more in terms of workforce development in general, but especially for, you know, students that have disabilities or have different abilities. One of the trends I have seen during this pandemic is that many people, when we were sort of shut down completely as a society, used the period of time to develop new skills, and in some cases, instead of going back to employment, to become entrepreneurs themselves and banding together with different people. And I've seen this also with folks in the disability community. Do you see any role for that in terms of programs moving forward?
We do, and thank you, Senator, for recommending that. One of the great hidden benefits to prospective entrepreneurs with disabilities is, you know, one of the significant barriers that we face is inaccessibility in the workforce and sometimes attitudes that are sort of deleterious to full inclusion. The nice thing about entrepreneurs with disabilities is they get to create work settings in their own image that meets their needs, and they're on the leading edge of creating truly inclusive workforce environments. And Carrie and I are pleased to say that, excuse me, we were able to use some of the state's investment in students with disabilities for this last session to fund the small pilot, entrepreneurship pilot, leveraging the tech incubator at Queens College, where we're going to get budding entrepreneurs with disabilities their first, their first exposure to entrepreneurship and small business development. So I think you've touched on something very powerful.
That's great. Thank you.
And we'd love to have you out to see it.
I'd love to.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Dr. Shockley, thank you. And our last panel consists of Corey Provost, the interim U.S. University Student Senate Chairperson, and a CUNY trustee, Saif Alan, Vice Chair of Disability Affairs, CUNY University Student Senate, and Ayesha Schmidt-Nyberg, the New York Public Interest Research Group Higher Education Coordinator. Thank you all for coming. Who is going to go first?
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Ayesha Schmidt, and I am the Higher Education Coordinator for Nyberg. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Since the pandemic began, students have gone through a myriad of problems that make it difficult for students to finish their degree. However, serious issues with college accessibility were clear even before the COVID-19 pandemic. During the past decade, New York State provided stagnant funding for higher education while raising tuition costs and leaving too many students ineligible for financial aid programs, even though the state's all-funds budget increased by over, sorry, by over 26%. While there were some bright spots in New York's higher education budget over the years, the fact remains that the state's budget reality should have meant increased support. Then the pandemic hit, and students faced a compounding education crisis. I'll share a few of their stories today. We have included more student stories in our written testimony. Inadequate or inflexible financial aid awards leave students with growing student loan debt and having to balance student and work demands. Hunter student Isabella Paul has had to take out loans and work part-time to cover tuition and other costs like textbooks and transportation. City college student Daniela Medina struggled to receive answers about FAFSA and financial aid packets while she pays for most of her tuition out of pocket. SUNY Purchase student Jordan Gibberman received the Excelsior Scholarship but had to take out both federal and private loans to pay for their room and board bill before the pandemic. We ask you to overhaul the Tuition Assistance Program by increasing maximum award to match public college tuition rates, including graduate students, students who are incarcerated, and covering winter and summer semesters as well. We also call for expansions in proven opportunity programs such as SEEK, EOP, and HEOP. The pandemic has been an emotionally taxing time for students as they are isolated and had to quickly adjust to an online learning environment. Student Support Services has struggled to keep up with student needs, as City College student Randy Garcia found when trying to make an appointment when they felt burnt out. Melissa Dominguez and Anna Compton, two seniors at Hunter College, both ran into trouble with long wait times and miscommunication when trying to schedule appointments with advisors to enroll in classes needed to graduate. Nyberg also calls for the passage of the New Deal for CUNY legislation, Bill's number S4461 and in the Assembly 5843, and analogous support for SUNY for smaller class sizes, funding for advisement, mental health counseling, and more. College should be affordable for all to provide access to one of the greatest economic equalizers for any individual who seeks it. A society works to recover from the pandemic, and it is vital that we not return to the status quo in higher education. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone, my colleagues in the University Student Senate, CCSD, CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities, and also graduate students and students with disabilities, and 11,000 students with disabilities allowing me to testify. So, okay. So my name is Saif Alan, and I'm the CUNY University Student Senate Vice Chair of Disability Affairs studying at John J. College. I'm testifying today on behalf of students with disabilities and graduate students to talk about the lack of equity in issues of affordability that impacted them during the pandemic. I understand those challenges because I myself am a graduate student with a disability, understand the financial constraints graduate students, including students with disabilities, faced during the pandemic. It is pivotal that the needs are addressed on behalf of these students because these communities of students were impacted during the pandemic. Our students with disabilities and our fellow graduate students struggle with equity. CUNY is comprised of 11,000 students with disabilities. Many of these students struggled during the pandemic. I interacted with these students during the pandemic, and they say they were struggling to communicate with their professors regarding accommodations. When I was communicating with the disabilities director, the disabilities director expressed that faculty development training is optional regards to accommodations. Many faculty members do not end up attending those sessions because they not get Many faculty members do not end up attending those sessions because they do not get paid with a stipend. Due to the lack of faculty development training regarding accommodations, our faculty members do not meet the expectations of our students. Our infrastructure development needs improvement to ensure campuses are ADA-compliant, such as Metcalfers, York College, College of the Adaline, Lehman College, and many more. Students in those campuses express that they are not able to properly commute to those campuses. There's an issue regards to lack of funding for the infrastructure. Students with disabilities struggle to receive adequate training and academic advisement. They expressed to me that some tutoring centers and academic advisement services are not fully, are not fully trained to provide accommodation for students with disabilities, such as extra time, extra time on tutoring services, and course substitute option for courses. For graduate students, students express lack of engagement with their campuses. Students in the master's program do not receive a stipend for their, on their master's thesis. Also, graduate students with disabilities do not receive adequate peer tutoring services. Our students with disabilities and graduate students with disabilities struggle with affording their tuition. Our students with disabilities struggle to earn a scholarship that will fully pay off their tuition. For instance, the John Jay Accessibility Center offers a $500 scholarship for high-achieving students with disabilities. This is not enough for them to pay their expenses since a full-time student spent thousands of dollars on their tuition. Many of them face unemployment, and others depend on SSI to pay off their living expenses. For those students with disabilities who do not receive financial aid, face a financial burden worrying about paying off their tuition costs. Our graduate students do not receive financial aid, and they either pay out of pocket or take out a loan. Our graduate students work in jobs that still do not make ends meet paying off their living expenses and tuition costs. Some of them teach as adjuncts and still are not satisfied with the salary that they earn in order to afford their necessary expenses. Other graduate students take out a loan, could not pay off their, paid off until years later after they graduate with their master's or professional degree. Although CUNY invested in the CUNY deal, I'm asking you to place more pressure on the Board of Trustees to ensure the fund is properly allocated to help students with disabilities succeed, to ensure that there's more faculty development training, investment for accommodation for tutoring and academic advisement services, making sure that campuses are ADA compliant, and more scholarship for these community students. Also, I'm asking you to pressure the Board of Trustees to allocate more funding for graduate students, ensure master students receive a stipend for their thesis, more investment on extracurricular activities to keep them engaged, salary raise for adjuncts, and more scholarship for high-achieving graduate students. Furthermore, I'm asking you to cancel student debt for graduate students who contributed their works, their hours at work on and off campus so they can achieve their career goals without worrying about student debt for the most of their lives. In addition, I'm asking you to collaborate with the race to the state senate to extend TAP awards, financial aid, to low-income graduate students so it can alleviate the financial burden and they can meet graduation requirement. Please take action as soon as possible so our students with disabilities and graduate students can receive the representation they deserve during the in-person transition to their classes. And I would like to thank you for your time for allowing me to testify today. Thanks.
Greetings, Senator Stavisky and members of this committee. My name is Corey Provost. I'm what they call a threefer. I earned my undergraduate and graduate degree at Brooklyn College. I'm currently now enrolled at the CUNY School of Law, where I'm hopefully and finally finishing my last degree here. So today, I'm sitting before you not only as a student of this university, but also as the University Student Senate's interim chairperson, as well as a trustee for the City University of New York. And I think the speakers before me did a great job, I think, in articulating a lot of the facts and figures, and I didn't want to further inundate you with a bunch of numbers. Outside of the 500,000 students that really, really rely on CUNY to make a better way of life for them and their families, that are part of the economic engine of the city and the state, that have provided so much more, and I think with the proper funding, they can continue to do so much more for our state. My story for CUNY, for me, CUNY's personal, and my story is that my family is very similar to many students that have, that have come to CUNY. My family immigrated here from Jamaica, and they came here because they came here with the idea that the streets here were paved with opportunities. And it became a family that struggled throughout the time, but struggled and survived long enough for me to be able to give back and do better for, and take our family to another level. So as we're standing here today and talking about maintaining equity, maintaining affordability of CUNY, there are two things that I wanted to point to. I think the New Deal for CUNY is the right direction, without a doubt. Tuition-free university is the direction I think our university must go, and I'll bring in our brothers and sisters at SUNY. I think it is something that is just must and fundamentally needed for us to, again, to thrive, to push as we look at the economic dynamics that we're currently faced with of this pandemic and what's going to happen thereafter. I think we need to invest in mental health resources on our campuses. It's definitely, definitely needed. We need to increase funding for academic advisors on our campuses. The students need guidance on how to navigate the school system and get out and get jobs and be able to participate in our economy. The last point I wanted to make was that when we look at what happened throughout the pandemic, student debt was essentially paused, or payments for it were paused on interest payments and things of that nature. That's not going to solve the problem. It's barely a Band-Aid. I think the direction that New York can play is leading this country and doing something remarkable with student debt. Maryland has a program that I would encourage this committee to look at. They have a student debt relief program. They award, I believe it's somewhere up to $5,000 per student that has a tax credit for every student that has went to undergraduate or graduate degree program in the state of Maryland. I think that is something that we could look at. We have a $200 billion budget. I'm sure we could find a little bit of money in there to create some kind of tax credit program moving forward for the students here. When we are looking at individuals that want to participate in our society, want to give back in our society, and we want people to enjoy being able to afford just to live, thrive here in New York, I think that is the right direction we should take, and that is my testimony for you here today.
Thank you. And would you say that the student debt was the major concern of the students?
Absolutely. I think, again, when we're looking at the student population here in New York, individuals want to, they come here because, they come here and they learn here because they want to stay here. They want to have their families here, and they want to be able to just be able to thrive here also. And student debt, for me, I have student debt. Again, three degrees at CUNY, and as affordable as it is, I still maintain some student debt, and there are hundreds of students that are just like me. And it becomes very difficult to provide for my family now. I have two little kids. Again, just a story that is replicated throughout the university with working individuals that are in the working class that want to get to that next level, up that economic ladder. But that student debt is a true albatross around us. It holds us back in being able to participate fully in society.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
It's good to see Corey. I'm sorry. Senator?
Yes. It's good to see, it's good to know that you're going to be a lawyer that will be advocating on behalf of the communities.
As a child of Jamaican immigrants myself, I understand, and I think everyone in here is a, well, everyone in here technically is an immigrant to this country if you're not an American Indian, but, you know, it's, it's good to hear. Your story is good to understand, and your story is typical of, as we should know about, so many thousands of students that are within CUNY, and we need to do all we can. We will be working on all those issues with the new administration this year. We're fortunate so far that this is an administration that has open ears as opposed to closed-minded administration that we had. So I look forward to seeing a lot of the issues that the three of you expressed really put forth in real discussion in this budget season. So I'm excited about what's going to happen. I want to thank the three of you for your advocacy, and I would ask you to keep, keep the effort going. I'm not sure how much we're going to be in person, would walk in the halls in Albany this year, but I expect that if there will be, I will see all three of you there.
Absolutely.
Senator Lou?
Madam Chair, I agree with Senator Combs' comments. It's always good to see a student perspective, and USS has been representing the students well in CUNY. Nyberg has, for generations, been doing it as well, so thanks for your input. And Corey, you know, you don't have to stop at three. You can go for a fourth degree after you become a lawyer.
We'll see.
Okay. Learning is a lifelong pursuit.
Absolutely.
We learn something new every day. Senator Goran?
Yes. Thank you very much for, the three of you, for the great advocacy that you do. Going back to what I raised before, I would love to hear the students' perspective on what you liked about online learning, as well as the hybrid. What you didn't like? Do you see future opportunities for it post-pandemic?
I can take that for right now. I think, again, I'm at the CUNY School of Law, and for me personally, the-- For me personally, it was the not having to commute. As you know, you're well aware, the MTA does wonders, and then sometimes it does not. So, you know, as we're advocating for, you know, funding for higher education, I'm going to make the plug for the MTA as well, but the commute for me was just very, very difficult. I live in central Brooklyn. CUNY School of Law is in Long Island City, Queens. Whether I drive or I take public transportation, the commute was very, very difficult. And being able to, again, not have to spend an hour commuting back and forth, being able to spend the time with my family instead, and being able to offset that was very, very pleasurable. And I think that going forward, I think the pandemic has showed us that what's possible now with technology and how more robust that education system can be in affording people opportunities that they didn't have before, or we just really didn't think about how we can do it before. I know there are some trade-offs with the quality of education. I know sitting in certain classes, it does make it a bit difficult, especially when we talk about the lack of equity for technology. So those are some things that I think we can make greater investments in as well, better training for professors and students in just using the technology that we have to for our courses.
Thank you. So speaking from successes on, like in Zoom and in virtual platforms, I can agree with Corey. Like for me, I travel like one hour each day when I used to be in person to John Jay, but being virtual gives me a lot of flexibility to take classes, go to meetings, and other things like that. And also, it has a beneficial factor for students with mobility disability, because sometimes they may have a trouble to commute to different places. So virtual option may be the most optimal choices for students with mobility disability. I have friends and colleagues who has a mobility disability, and they say that virtual option is one of the optimal choices. But something that can be better off, I think communication in terms of virtual platform can be improved. I think, as I mentioned in my speech, faculty development training is optional. I think it should be mandatory, especially in this digital age, to ensure faculty members are better meeting, meeting the students' needs, basically. And if it comes to, like, an example for accommodations, it has been displaced, like when I was in the, during the pandemic, one of my peers expressed to me that they were not able to get in contact with the professors when they emailed them regards to accommodations. It's basically, I think they need to be adjusted with the technology age and with the digital age in communications regards to accommodations. So this is something that needs to be improved, and I think the state senate can work on this. Maybe the Board of Trustees can put more investment into the CUNY New Deal, because CUNY New Deal was already invested, but I think there needs to be more pressure in terms of allocation to ensure that there is more efficient communication between professors and students. So this is something that can be considered moving forward, like more, better communication with students and professors.
Yes, I'd like to agree with what you two have said as well. I do think, especially considering virtual classes were a response to a crisis, there is a lot that did not get planned for and could be bettered as we move forward, especially as virtual classes can be a great accommodation for many students. I also think one of the issues that we saw, especially with communication, many professors, their classes have hundreds of students in them, which is why it is very important that we do hire more professors, have smaller class sizes so students can get that kind of attention that they need from their professors to get the most out of their education. Many of the students I've talked to as well and have worked with, especially operating an internship that used to be 100% in-person, 100% virtually, is that it is very difficult for students to get engaged, to talk to their peers, make friends like that, because you do feel very isolated, especially because for many students, college is one of the biggest social things that they have going on in their lives. That's where they make friends, that's where they make connections, and that is very difficult to do in a virtual setting. So while there are benefits, like we've said, there are many trade-offs to having all virtual classes online, and is something that we can work to improve going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I thank you all for coming, particularly the students, and I look forward to working with you in the next session. It is now 1:20, and the committee hearing is adjourned.